Thank you. Today, we welcome Jackie Spry, who has been tracking our ARP funding and spending and income and outgo. So she's going to update council on where we're at with ARP. Lisa asked if this was a budget session. It may not specifically be a budget session, but it certainly impacts the budget for the next couple of years. And so I think it'd be really helpful to let us know what's going on and where we're headed. Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you. So this is actually my first time officially presenting to council. So my name's Jackie Spry, and I hope that over the next year that I can present more to you and more frequently to you so that you are, it's a more transparent process. So, there we go. Yeah. Before we get started, I just want to mention that, you know, I've worked very closely with Lisa. And while my position is actually in the planning department, I stay on the third floor in finance. And I think that was a deliberate decision because I constantly am going back and forth with Lisa about numbers, transfers, whatever it may be, trying to reconcile the budget, whatever it is. And so we have, we've had a very good working relationship through this process, as well as other departments, the controller, risk management, all work, Solicitor's Office, working together. And I, lastly, I want to mention that, you know, this, this, each step of the way has been a very deliberate and intentional process. We're not doing things just because it feels good, or it's right, or we're doing it because we are guided by the final rule and the grant program. And we're guided by the statutes, and we're also guided by accountability that we need to uphold and the liability of the city. So everything that we have done thus far has been deliberate and intentional. And I really want to portray that in this presentation. I want to show you what the processes behind the scenes of ARP. So please feel free to ask me questions or ask Lisa questions and Lisa chime in. You know, we work together on this presentation. So, you know, I wanted to be an open discussion. Okay? Any questions before I get started? All right. Oh, gosh. All right. So, this may take me a few minutes to get used to. So these are the buckets that you've been, that you've been, you've seen throughout the process. And I like to separate these buckets into our agency or departments. It's easier to navigate and understand, and it's also easier to track. So as you see, the $76 million is separated by category, and then who's administering those programs. And we're going to see that throughout this program, throughout this, through tonight's meeting, how this, this framework is set up. So this is a diagram, and this is the first time you're seeing this diagram. It's the allocation of this, the ARP budget, and it's showing it by percentages. And so as you can see, community and economic development is 25% of the allocation of ARP. Housing is 22.06%, and infrastructure is 15%, and so on. So you can see the makeup or breakup of the different categories that you all have approved through this process. I do want to note that revenue replacement, the $6 million in loans, is added into this diagram. So we didn't break it out, even though those loans aren't ARP specific anymore because of the way that we push them through revenue replacement. They are still ARP money and put into the community and economic development section, as well as the housing section on And this you've seen regularly on the council updates that I send out. I try to send, we try to send out monthly. You'll see that these are the expenditures, and it's not actually to date, but it's from November 30. These are the cumulative expenditures for each one of those programs that are in the buckets. So, and here you'll see that the revenue replacement is separated out, that $12,125,376 is separated out, showing what went to the loan programs for race and for community and economic development.
And I'd like to step in there just a minute. The $12,125, if you recall, wasn't the entire amount. It was just what we had left unallocated out of the 2021 and 2022 allowable revenue replacement. So we were allowed to take a certain amount in '21 and a certain amount in '22. We actually needed $12,801 in revenue replacement to replace those two loan programs. But we only had $12,100, or, yeah, $125 left. So I will be transferring that remaining $675,000 right after the first of the year.
When we're allowed to take the allowance of the revenue replacement, because we've, we've used it up for the, for this year.
Do you know when the '23 calculation will be for that?
Once we close the year and open the new year and do any sort of adjustments that we have to do, I'll be able to recalculate that.
What was it? It was about $9 million that, last year, that we were able to calculate? And it's based on what the city's revenue grows by with an allowance of 5%? So the difference moving forward? Do you have any idea, like ballpark off the thumb? Cool.
Well, it's gonna go up another 5%. So I'm guessing in the $12 million range.
That's what we've anticipated, at least over the last year.
Yeah. Interesting. Cool.
But that also depends on whether we're over or under on our revenue for the year. So.
Go ahead.
Okay. Anything else to mention? The revenue replacement, the other, the other line item was the, the fire trucks that were spent out of that initial first revenue replacement calculation. So anything else on this expenditure? And this will change. This, this is, this will definitely change as we, obviously, as we move forward. And while the, the framework or the overview that we just looked at is cumulative, the ARP spreadsheet that I sent you on Friday, which probably made your eyes go a little crazy, is everything. It's every dollar down to the penny that we've spent on ARP. It's every transfer that we've done, every, every approval, every demographic information, its updates on the progress of the project. It is the story behind everything. And we did this intentionally because oftentimes when we would be reporting to Treasury, we would say, wait a minute. We know that we had 500,000. Where did it go? Why is it there? You know, the pathway that some of this money has taken is a little bit times confusing. And so we told the story in this ARP overview or detailed spreadsheet. This is our working spreadsheet. This will continue to be.
That you go headline?
That's the one. Yeah. But that will, that will be our working spreadsheet. And probably that will be the information used for the dashboard. And we can talk about that at the end. But this will be, that way the community can see exactly what, we don't have to show them everything, but the community then can see what exactly has been spent, why it's been spent, what the projects are, and how much is left. Okay? Sorry for making your eyes go crazy. So I wanted to touch a little bit upon capital expenditures, since they're a little bit of an outlier. And just to give you a bit of background, in the interim final rule, which was before the final rule, well, actually, in between, I think, them finalizing the final rule, there were many questions posed to Treasury. You know, what if I have a project that doesn't meet eligibility? What if I have a project that's not on the eligibility, the category list that is allowable within the final rule? How do I make it that, how do I know that it's, it's going to meet the test, if you will, so that, because we, you don't get approval from Treasury on projects. You have to make your own determination. So Treasury's response was in the final rule to put its own section about capital expenditures that really spells out exactly how to, not exactly, but it spells out what you're supposed to do to deem if a project would be eligible. And it's a bit confusing. I'm not, I'm not gonna lie. I mean, we've had some conversations about capital expenditures. It is confusing. It is, the, the language is sort of redundant. And what I can say is there's two categories. One is there's a category for smaller projects that are below $1 million. Now, while these projects are not required, because they're below $1 million, to go through these, this extra step of writing a justification paper. Because if it's over $1 million, then you have to go through and justify to Treasury why this is an eligible project. It still has to be proportionate and a reasonable response to COVID. Period. That's what they spell out. It must be related and proportional to COVID. And I, I want to stress that. And I know we could go into it, and I could explain a lot of examples. But they do spell that out, that it must be proportional and reasonable to the, to the COVID-19 pandemic. And then if it's over $1 million, you're held to a much greater scrutiny, and you have to justify it, and you have to report on it. Anything else to add there?
No, I think you covered it. It just needs to be proportional. You also need to consider all the, a variety of different solutions. You have to identify the problem. And you have to relate it back to COVID. And then you have to consider different solutions to that problem and compare and contrast.
And when speaking with the consultants, they, they, they mentioned that Treasury is really looking for logical decisions, reasonable and logical decision-making with the spending of this money. And this is the matrix that they, that they share in the final rule, just having to do with the thresholds of the million versus the 9999. So, that takes us into the second part of this presentation, which is really the internal grant administration of our, of the grants that we've awarded. So when we look primarily, those are being administered through the depart, well, they're, and when you go back to the buckets, it's the Department of Economic and Community Development that have the grants that have, that were open, right? So we had flagship, we had the Community Development Initiative, Restaurant and Entertainment Industry Relief Grant, Small Business Organization Technical Assistance, Brownfield Site Redevelopment Fund, and ECRDA. And those, all of those required, or require an agreement and monitoring. And I want to step you through the process of how we, how we've done that. This first, I'm sorry. This first slide is really showing, and it's kind of before you get to the grant, grant application or open application process, but it's, it's understanding how you designate the negative economic impact. And I purposely put this up here because we're addressing the economic, does this grant address the economic harm? Exists, sorry, does it, does an economic harm exist? And then whether this harm was caused or made worse by COVID-19? Is the response designed to address the identified economic harm or impact resulting from or exacerbated by COVID-19? Is the response related and reasonably proportional to the extent and type of harm experienced? And lastly, is it a recipient, is the recipient a sub-recipient or a beneficiary? And I'm going to get into that more. So this is really designating the group, the individual, the class of, of the economic harm that's, that's been had, and then the response to it. And then also determining how you're going to pass through that money. Is it going to be a sub-recipient or, or is it going to be a beneficiary? And what?
One minute.
Yes?
Final.
I am. Right here. Yep. Next slide. Yeah. So, and it's confusing because in, in the agreements, you know, in, in, I guess, policy recipient, sub-recipient, beneficiary, sub-award, there's a lot of terminology when writing, when, when reading through the, through the, through these agreements. But the distinction between the sub-recipient and the beneficiary is really contingent upon the rationale for why a recipient is providing funds to the individual entity. So in, in essence, a sub-recipient is a pass-through entity, like the redevelopment authorities. We're giving money, we're awarding money, the city is the recipient, to the sub-recipient to, to perform or to.
Carry out.
Carry out. Thank you. Carry out the program. So it, it's not directly, you're not giving money to someone who's, someone or an organization that's directly benefiting from it, that's a beneficiary. But you're giving it to a, a organization that will carry out a program that meets the tenants of this program, of ARP. Does that help clarify it? Okay. And there're diff, there's, there's few differences, and I'm going to explain those to you. So I like this graphic on the side. I found, I happened to find this. But a sub-recipient continues to be responsible for monitoring and overseeing. So the city continues to be responsible for the monitoring, overseeing of the sub-recipient's use of ARP funds. That is a requirement of the ARP program, that we are, as the recipient, we are responsible for the sub-recipients. It's different for the beneficiaries. They're the end users. And there, there is really no requirement for monitoring. There's no requirement for, for writing an agreement. But it is recommended, however, it's not, it's not required. And one of the main differences between a sub-recipient and a beneficiary is that the sub-recipient has to follow what's called uniform guidance. And that's the government-wide framework for grants, grant management. And it's really the, like, the authoritative rules and requirements for the federal award. So any federal award, they have to follow procurement standards. They have to follow opening competitive bid processing, Davis Bacon, prevailing wage, all of that. And so all of our sub-recipients, which are only two at this moment, they have to be in compliance with the federal guidelines for grant administration. Does that, does that make sense for, I know, and, yeah.
I want to add.
Show what it looks like.
It's embedded in the federal code of regulations. This is the uniform guidance.
Yeah.
So by, by cycling the housing money through revenue replacement, getting folks out of these restrictions, do they know, does like, hands no longer have to use prevailing wage, but they otherwise would have?
You mean race? Redevelopment authority? Not hands?
Yeah. The loan programs that we awarded to.
I mean hands, like on the $4 million loan that we approved.
We didn't, we didn't, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
That's.
$3 million.
Yeah.
That's from a different program. That's, that's on ARP. And if it is, you're right.
But, but they are not.
Once.
You're.
No.
Go ahead.
Money out of ARP money, too.
The, the, the answer to the question is no. Because we, we funneled that through revenue replacement, and because we did that, it released the ARP restrictions. And we did that on, we did that very intentionally for a multitude of reasons, not only for the ARP reporting restrictions, but also due to the principal and interest that we were not able to recoup. So the answer is no. They're not held to the same ARP restrictions for the loan, however prevailing wage, I would imagine, and other, you know, they will, they have their own, I don't, yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that, other than they are not under the ARP guidance. Now, the, the eligible use and intended use of those loans must remain, and that's in their agreement. So they can't use a loan for something that's not an eligible use under ARP. We made sure of that in the, in the loan transfer. So the intent and spirit of this, of, of the ARP must remain in those loan programs.
In essence, we made a loan to the DECD department and a loan, or a grant, I'm sorry. We made a grant to DCED in the amount of $6 million. And we made a grant between, from the city of Erie to Race in the amount of $6,800,000. Once they use that, they are not held to the same standards anymore. And the reason we did that was because the, the final rule prevented, made loans, programs almost impossible. Made it very difficult and made it hard for us to collect.
How many people do we have monitoring this money? I love the pronoun, we. We do this. You do, you're a we.
And, and to, just to piggyback on what you said, in their, in the redevelopment agreement, loan agreement, they do have benchmarks, and they do have a monitoring system in place. So it's not like we just gave them the grant, and we said, oh, yeah, here's $6 million, and we're not going to check on you, check up on you again. We, we have, Aaron and I work together so that he put benchmarks in there that he has to meet. And we will, we're, even though it's not ARP, we're still going to be monitoring them. So DECD is a little bit different, because they don't have to have an agreement, because they're an internal department. But they report to you on, as far as I, as far as I know, Chris Groner gives you an update on all of his loan programs. So you are, you are aware of what's being spent. And of course, Lisa is seeing that coming across in the financial piece of it.
Yeah. He's even given us extra meetings to help explain. I was just trying to see if there was, what the other benefits were of cycling it through revenue replacement when you were talking about the requirements on recipients.
And I guess my, my pause here. And I guess my, my pause here with this is that I want you to understand that we, again, every step of the way has been quite intentional. I mean, we worked with the solicitor, with Gary Visceco, for a while, you know, for days on how we're going to work through with Redevelopment Authority, how we're going to make sure that, you know, even though we're giving them a grant, we're still monitoring, we're still meeting benchmarks, that we're still holding them accountable to a certain degree. So, okay. Let's move on. This is the application process, and this is kind of a large slide. And this was shared at the Advisory Committee meeting, but I, I want you to understand how it works. So, for instance, with the Community Development Initiative grant, right, there was a registration online, they completed the regislate, regist, registration. The applicant receives an email to submit supporting documentation, like their P&Ls, other financial statements that they needed to submit to DECD, Jen Hoffman was really the person at the, at that time. Then DCED reviews all applications for eligibility and completion. They really vetted through the first phase of that. Then it was processed and sent on to the project review team, and I'll go through who was on that project review team a little bit further. From there, the project review team scored with the scorecard that was created each, each applicant that came in. And the scorecard was really for, to make sure we were dispersing money equitably, to be able to come up with a, come up with a matrix of how to Equitably distribute money and also equitably, the amounts, how to determine the amounts.
Yeah, could you just remind council who was on the
Yes, I will, I have. I have that. I'm just, this is kind of just a quick overview.
Okay, gotcha.
So, once the project review team was, that was finalized, then they made recommendations, and then it came to you all for approval. And I'm sure you remember all those. Then from there, before we even considered an agreement between, between the city and the applicant, we checked on all of their, if they had any unpaid taxes, delinquent on any taxes, fees, fines, blighted property list, we did the full, and Lisa really handled that. We, we looked, we went to the sewer authority, water authority, and made sure that, that everybody was up, up to speed. So, from there, yes. How did you handle? Absolutely. Absolutely. And they, most, most of the times, that's, that's what, we have one person in flagship that has not been awarded there. Out of the seventy-three that were awarded, we have one person who still hasn't paid a fee, a fine. So, they definitely were given the opportunity to, to pay that. And once they did, then we proceeded with the applica, the agreement.
Is there a time limit for them to pay?
Is there a time, no, we don't, we, we're not restricting, I mean
So, if you don't pay it in
Not at this moment.
A year, you don't get anything.
Yeah, we don't have anything, we don't have a time limit, but I think that's a good suggestion. I think we should, we should revisit that. And, because we, we really only have one, out of all the grants that we've, that we've, that are lump sums, twenty-five-hundred-dollar, the five-thousand-dollar Restaurant and Relief Grants, we only have one. So, that's pretty good. That's pretty good. So, once the applicants have, we've, we've checked on the applicants, we've checked on eligibility, then it's time to handle the agreement between the city, ARP agreement, between either the beneficiary or the sub-recipient. And then once it's signed, in the case of flagship and the restaurant grants, those are a one-time dispersment. So, it's twenty-five hun, twenty-five-hundred dollars for flagship, five-thousand dollars. In, in terms of the Community Development Initiative, which are beneficiaries, they're organizations directly benefiting from this money, they are reimbursed after the work is complete. And that's another form of monitoring. So, for instance, let me give you an example like, well, you'll see a few examples, but let's say Sarah Reed had a program this summer, and they, they used their ARP funding for programmatic salary to hire some, some people to run the program, and also to buy supplies. So, now, they're in the process of submitting a payment request form to us, and I've worked with them a little bit, that will show payroll records, and will show all of their receipts, every single receipt that, of supplies that they've purchased. And once we have that documentation, I review it, Lisa reviews it, the controller reviews it, we make sure that their final budget, it's matching all of the things that they submitted in their application, and then we proceed with reimbursing them. So, it's not that they're just getting the money upfront for those bigger grants. And I'm sorry I took so much time on that one. So, this, this is, I'll go quickly.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes.
So, that's a process that you set up with your beneficiaries?
Correct.
And so, so it's an internal, it's not a federal guideline that we're following with this practice, it's an internal process that you developed?
Correct. However, we were, in the final ruling, you are able to give a lump sum, or you, you can set up your own process, your own processes.
The way we choose to set, chose to set this up was modeled after the way our HUD funds are distributed.
And also, we had a lot of discussion, we had a lot of discussion regarding accountability. And that was one of the biggest factors, is how are we going to make sure that this money is spent in an impactful way, and that it's spent in an eligible way?
So, while I can't say I agree or disagree, it's the process there, but if I'm an organization, and I have to, I apply for a grant, and I have to spend the money, before I get the money, if I'm a struggling or smaller organization, it would seem like it would be a hard thing to do. You know, if I have, you know, say my budget's twenty thousand dollars and my fund balance is five thousand dollars, and now I have to put on fifteen thousand dollars worth of production in order to get my twenty thousand dollars, then it would, so, you know, would I have to borrow the money? Would I have to do additional fundraising in order to be able to effectively use the system that's been set up? And so, we don't have to
I just want, I'd like I'll just mention two things. One is that, that the, the, those grants were community development initiatives, were established nonprofits, they had to be. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, we're not asking you to complete, and, and the process that was put in, we're not asking you to complete your project, but we're asking to show us that the work, the work was done, and then we would reimburse, just for like a construction project, you know, you can reimburse as you go along. I do want to mention that the, the ECR, or the ECRA grant that is out currently, which is ARP money through the county, it's the four million dollars that ECRA got, for nonprofits, cultural and arts, they have to have a one percent, they have to have a, a match for their funding. We did not require that. So, I just, to, just to show the differences in, in the framework of the, of how it was set up.
Many of the recipients are also recipients of
Homes, CDVG.
HUD grants, CDVG. And they're, they're aware of the process, they're used to following it, they turn in budgets, they turn in payment requests, if they want to make a change to their budget, if something changes, and they're going to pay more for this or less for that, they run it by us, and we, we, we work with them.
I'm just curious, because I can see how they're broken down into two separate categories, and it seems as though the beneficiary category is more of a, a larger amount than what the loan system was. I'm assuming that it's more than five thousand that was given to the beneficiary? That's why we're asking such a lengthy process and how they're spending the funds?
Right, so, the community, the five thousand was just for the Restaurant and Relief, and that was, I think, thirty-seven, we, I have a slide on that, thirty-seven awardees. We had seventy-three flagship awardees, that was twenty-five-hundred-dollar grants, and that was done. It was like a one-and-done. The community development initiatives, those were Martin Luther King Center, Odessa's Place, Youth Literacy Project, I'm just, twenty-three projects. What were you going to say? Yeah, Bodie Gardens, you know
But larger amounts.
Anywhere from three-hundred-and-sixty thousand, actually, seven-hundred-and-seve, six-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand all the way down to twenty-five thousand. So, those were the larger grants that we gave out, and that's why we put in this system so that we could make sure that we're, we're monitoring them. We're not only monitoring them with our, our, our internal, but we also are being monitored externally.
Externally, yeah. If we, if we use the funds in any way that we're not supposed to, we will be held liable to pay it back.
And so, this is just a checklist, and, and you can look at this on your own, but that, it, it was pretty self-explanatory, but it was, the, the request for financials was there, and so you had to show that you either had a loss in revenue, or you had increased cost, or some, you know, you had to show something that, that there was, or, or, you know, what population you were supporting. I do want to mention that we had grant webinar sessions, and we do have techni, we do still have technical assistance for anyone who's in need of hel, helping them through the grant writing process. So, anybody in the community who might have barriers, we have Paramount Pursuits that's working with us to provide technical assistance. And then this takes us to the project review team that I mentioned, which is, this was a very deliberate choice, and we didn't choose these people, but these were a very deliberate group of how, you know, of, of community members who came together for hours, volunteers, and determined eligibility and amount of award. Yes?
So, actually, the mayor did select the people, correct?
I don't think just, I don't know if the mayor was involved at all.
Or the administration chose Chose, chose the persons.
I, I think it was a team in Neighborhood Resources and the mayor's office that start, oversaw this process up until the time that we were ready to start awarding.
Yeah, I think that there was a group of, you know, I know the outreach community, outreach committees and just determined who would be on that. I don't know, mayor, you're here. You don't need
Well, they came from the mayor's councils. People were selected from the mayor's councils and from, and then I guess recommended from some other people.
Well, they, they also looked for people that had certain disciplines, they wanted to make sure they had
Expertise.
People with particular expertise that would lend itself to these programs.
Oh, absolutely.
And they wanted to pick from a diverse
I was just saying that. There's a distinction, though, when the administration picked all the people and put them on the panel, it just needs to be, you know, because you, you aren't here yet.
No, I was here. I was here, and I, I think you might be thinking about the ARP Advisory Council, that is the mayor's committees. Those people were chosen as liaisons to sit from the mayor's committees. This group is very different than that. This group was, while, while it may have been chosen by the administration, they were not, they were not just internal people, but people in, in the community of a diverse background, not just demographically, but also, we needed somebody who knew how to look at a budget on there. We needed a banker, we need, you know, we needed that. But, yes, they, and they were volunteers, and they spent countless hours looking at these applications, so
And I think council, I remember, council was invited to attend those other meetings via Zoom, the advisory committee meetings.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I know I attended.
Right. We opened it up to the full council, I think, after the third session or something like that.
Yeah, you'll see an attorney, a banker, somebody that's versed in real estate, you'll, business owner, somebody from the refugee commi, uh, community.
What were the, like, they came to you with an ask, like, we need this amount of money or whatever, how were you able to, like, how did the team decide, like, this is how much an org, what are some ways that you thinks it?
This is the next slide. No, and that's a, that's a great question. I think what, what, we were not part of those, that conversation. I mean, we were part of it, but we weren't sitting in the room with the team. They had this scorecard. And this was, this was essentially to, to answer that question. We looked at a lot of different scorecards that are out there, and came up with one that would be applicable to this program, primarily this program. But I think the thought was, they wanted to at least try to fund the ones that were eligible, a portion of them. I, I don't think they funded anyone fully. So, yeah, that, that, they, they, they funded, they funded at least a portion of the ask, maybe not the full ask, but, and then they also, I think, determined, like, they asked questions, have you had any other money, ARP funding, you know, that you see on the scorecard, to determine kind of the amount that was from the request.
If you, if they ask for the full ask, and you refund part of, how do we know that the project's going to be completed if they don't have the half that they hidden yet?
Well, one of the ways that we, we answered that question was, before we sent them an agreement, we asked for, we asked, both of us reviewed every single, even after the review team, we reviewed every single budget, and then we asked them for another project description. How are you going to use this money? Now that you have only a hundred and fifty out of the two-hundred-thousand-dollar ask, tell me how you're going to use exactly this money. I know you might have to alter your scope, which they did, many of them had to alter it, but then we sat together, and that took, I mean, some months. We had to, even though there, there was a really good project review team, we made sure that we had a good budget in place for these, these organizations, and, and made sure that their scope was in line with their budget, so that when they submit a payment request to me, I go back to that final, final budget, and I make sure that they're spending their money the way they told me to. And if they're not, I say to them, you're going to have to submit a budget modification, otherwise I'm not going, you're not going to draw down on your money. That's just the reality of it, right? You have to do what you say.
If you give me money and write a program to Jazz organization, and they give me the other half, I have a letter of commitment, would that suffice?
Again, well
We do have some, some beneficiaries that are using other sources of money, and we do take that into account. I think there's at least one of them that we added another column, we gave them a different spreadsheet, because we were funding in part instead of in full. So, that's how it works.
Yeah, and I don't, I think, I think there's really only one project that I can think of off the top of my head that is reliant upon additional funding for completion of project. Most of these, oh, there's, there's another one, too. They're capital improvement projects or construction projects, and they are relying upon additional funding in order for completion. But you'll see in the agreement, we have But you'll see in the agreement, we have a retainage. We have a ten percent retainage and so until that project is fully complete, we will not release the last ten percent of that money. So that was purposely put in place for, for, it was exactly your question. Um, anything else? Yeah? Uh, I touched upon this, so I'll keep going. Um, this was that applicant check that I told you. Um, so we're, we're constantly talking with Ed and the other agencies to make, authorities to make sure that these are up to date. So we've covered that. And then that takes us to the agreement. So once they're cleared, that takes us to the agreement, which I have a few copies here that I wanted to share with you, cause you haven't actually seen an agreement. And this agreement is twenty-seven pages. Um, so have a look at the agree- I'll pass, pass them this way. Um, I only have three copies, sorry, but I'll send it to you if you want it. Um.
I can look.
The agreement, the agreement is, um, spells out everything at the beginning. So it talks about responsibilities, talks about the retainage that I just mentioned, competitive bidding, that even though we're not following the uniform guidance, we're not following the federal grant regulations, they are still required to submit three bids to us and we, we don't pick who they, the, the, we don't pick the, the bidder, but we, we at least see, we get to see at least three bids and we have it in our file, that at least they, they got three separate bids.
So they don't have to take the loans yet?
We're not requiring that. We are not requiring, not with the beneficiary. Um, performance monitoring, you'll see that there's a section in the, um, in that agreement which references the, um, City of Erie Beneficiary Grant Monitoring Plan that Lisa and I drafted. Um, and that is spelling out step by step, if you're a construction project, you have to send us bi-weekly photos. You, we're gonna do a site visit. We're gonna have progress reports that are due. These are not fed- federal mandates, but it's things that we've put in place, again, for accountability and to protect the city. Um, maintenance of records, those are just, you know, that, that's kind of boilerplate language. Acknowledgment and funding, if they, uh, develop something or they have a program or they have a new construction that they make sure that they put, the City of Erie was supported, this project. Um, termination, of course, payment of fund or recruitment, that is, um, very important because if we find that they're not spending the money they told us in the way that they would spend the money or that they're not spending it in the timeline given, that we can pull that money back. Um, insurance was a big part of this. Um, Chris Moore, the risk manager, really helped, helped guide us through this to make sure that we protected the city. Um, the numbers you'll see in there are quite large for some of these smaller nonprofits. We have worked with them. We've worked with the nonprofits so that if they come to us and say, look, this is a burden, this extra insurance is very expensive for us, we've worked with them. And the, the insurance then becomes kind of specific to the project. So, and I consult with, um, Chris on that. I am not doing that on my own and we're not doing that on our own, so he's the expert. Um, completion of project, you'll see that, uh, there's some language in there. Um, oh, I'm sorry, final approved budget, we talked about that. They, they need to have that submitted to us before we execute the agreement. A project description, if the scope has changed from the initial application process. And then if the scope changes and the budget changes anytime through this process, they have to submit a budget modification to me. Then I submit it to Lisa who reviews it and we approve it. So it's not, even if it's a dollar, I mean, we've, you know, fifty, fifty dollars, we will require them to do a budget modification because it changes the numbers. So. Um, then the payment request form, we've talked about a little bit. And then the exhibits are really the, um, kind of boilerplate agreement language about terms and conditions of the ARP, um, funding, civil rights certification, lobby certification, and then we have the attachments. And the attachments are their application, a contractor list that the city provides, the grant monitoring plan, and then their final approved budget. So that's the beneficiary agreement. Now, the sub-recipient agreement, really the only difference here is that they, their words and term, their word terms and conditions in that section, it talks about the uniform guidance and that they have to comply with the, with this. And so that's really the, the, the difference. Otherwise, the two agreements are very similar. Um, for flagship and for, um, for restaurant, the, these are smaller amounts. We require a two-page letter to go out, signing, they sign it and they are, in the letter, it talks about time of performance, um, recruitment, if they're not spending it the way they should be spending it, eligible uses. They verify that all the information is correct and then we, again, we check, you know, we checked before, but we checked to make sure there's no delinquencies. So while it's not a twenty-seven page document, it's still, it's something, it, it binds us with, with those grant recipients.
So if a restaurant closes, they give us the twenty-five hundred back?
No, no.
Or it never opens?
I don't know that.
Well, they wouldn't get the money. Okay.
Clover One had sickness situations. I think they'll reopen in time.
Well, and, well, I should, but you know, the, uh, the one, um, the one on state that had that bull inside its bar, they were.
Bourbon Barrel.
Oh, Bourbon Barrel. They ended up getting, I think they got five hundred thousand dollars of state ARP money and I don't know what happened with their money. I wonder if, cause I know they're not reopening.
And that wasn't, that wasn't the City of Erie that was doing that.
That was state.
And, you know, I think that there are investigations or looks from the federal government in different places about, you know, the PPE loans and all that, but that wasn't us.
No, no, yes, we should be clear.
And everybody that received one of these had given us financial statements, um, displaying a loss.
Yes, right. Or increased costs. That was in the final rule, was allowable.
Loss of revenue or increase of costs.
Right. Um, so I, I just wanna touch on this. I, I've already spoken to this a little bit, but, um, in terms of grant monitoring, we have the, the treasury monitoring that we have to do quarterly, which has been very convoluted. And, um, they're, they are changing through the, the last year and a half. They've changed the way that we report. They've changed the, um, the, uh, what we have to report. So we have to be very flexible in that reporting and we have to be very, um, thorough in terms of how we keep our records because it's, it's just a, it's just a confusing process.
We have to start a couple of days ahead because there might be questions that weren't on the previous report that just pop up out of nowhere. They're not really warning us of any of this. So, uh, we have to give ourselves enough time to follow up on any unanticipated questions.
Yeah, and they've added questions throughout this, um, and you'll see on the spreadsheet, the big spreadsheet that made your eyes go crazy. You'll, if you scan to the right of it, you'll see that, that some of those questions are right out of the, um, reporting that we have to do. You know, they're asking for what disproportionately impacted community have you, has been affected. So, and they ask that for, for public works projects, for our infrastructure projects. They, they're very, um, focused on that. Then we have the grant monitoring policy that I've spoke, that we've spoken about, um, progress reports that we're slowly moving into that because, you know, we don't have that many organizations that are, are too far along yet, but we will be asking for detailed progress reports. Where, where are you at in your project in the next year? Um, and then I, we've spoken about the payment request and how that is, again, a, a type of monitoring for these grants. And then we have a grant closeout for, form. Um, we've closed out two grants so far. Um, and when we closed them out, we did a, a, a site visit. Uh, I, I went with, um, our code enforcer, A- Andy Zimmerman. Um, they happen to be two capital improvement projects. One of them, uh, uh, showcased here in this presentation. Um, he looks at everything. He makes sure everything is to code and, um, we document that they, uh, they did what they intended to. Um, I've, I've talked a little bit about this. This is that payment request form that, this is the document that we have. Um, and I, I wanna make one note on here because sometimes the organizations get a little bit frustrated with us. Um, if for some reason the, they're not providing the documentation that we find is satisfying, the, or not satisfying, but it's not really showing the work that was completed or we're not getting the right information or support documentation, then we have all of the, um, we have the right based on this, uh, disclaimer in this payment request form to request whatever it is that we need. So if for some reason we find that organizations are submitting salary reimbursement, we, we, we will not only take a number. We need to see record that they were paid, that they ha- ha- you know, an hourly rate of some kind or some kind of record that shows that they worked. Um, so, uh, sometimes there's a little frustration there because we're asking for more work on their, on their part. But, um, I think that it helps when it gets to the controller because then she knows exactly what we're paying out and there's no question. Okay, this takes us to the fun part. Um, I wanted to, after that sort of technical presentation, I wanted to show you a little bit about, about how these dollars are impacting our community. So I might read a little bit here, but bear with me. Um, first is flagship. To date, we'd have, we've had three rounds of flagship. We've had seventy-three, uh, seventy-three awards. Of those seventy-three awards, sixty-one of them are women-owned, so that's eighty-four percent. That's pretty, I, I was amazed at how large that number was. And forty-five of those were minority-owned, so that's sixty-two percent. The mayor, uh, had his, you, you wanted to meet a thirty percent for your, for your threshold for minority support and so we are way beyond it in this particular, um, program. So, uh, we have awarded a hundred and eighty thousand and we have seventy thousand remaining. As far as I know, from what I've heard at least in meetings, that, uh, we will have one more round of this flagship. Oh, this is, um, this is a little, this is interesting and I don't know if you can see it that well on the screen, but this is showing the amount of money per census tract. And so when you look at this map, you'll see the numbers are the census tracts in the City of Erie. And as the lighter ones or the yellow ones are the, are zero, zero money has gone into the se- that census tract. And it, the darker you get is the more amount of money from flagship has gone into that census tract. So we've cul- culminated the, the, um, data to show.
Businesses located.
Exactly.
Residents.
Right. Business, uh, business location, cause this was for businesses, not for residents. Um, and it just shows, it just shows it based on, uh, locational or geospacing data. So, um, in this particular instance, you'll see that downtown really, um, or track one received, uh, a darker, darker coloring as well as track nine and two twenty-four.
That's something that's confusing, uh, here on the flagship award, where it says, okay, sixty-one, eighty-four percent were women-owned, including one minority-owned business. And then below it, it says forty-five minority-owned businesses. I.
One of the minorities was a woman.
Okay.
Oh, um, yeah, that might have, that may have been, I presented this at the, um, the ARP Advisory Council and I might have not deleted that, that text. So, um, but yes, that's what, that's what that means.
Or one of women was a minority then.
But I did not, I did not double count when I did those percentages. I did not double count women and minorities. So even if you were a woman and a minority, I didn't double count it, if that makes sense. That might have been from the, uh, from an old presentation.
So then forty-five percent of, or forty-five of these, uh, grants went to what we call, uh, ethnic minorities and separated out from the eighty-four percent that were women?
Minority represents, and it's on the bottom there, it's, the definition is on the bottom for what minority represents for this equation. Um, yes, I counted minority and women separately. And that's all on that really big spreadsheet. If you scroll to the right, you'll see, of the flagship applicants, you'll see the demographic information that's inputted in there.
Okay.
So, um, for restaurant and entertainment venue awards, the five thousand, those were five thousand dollars. Um, of those, and I think we've had two rounds of those, um, thirty-seven grants were awarded. Um, we had forty applications that came in, twenty in qualified census tracts, uh, twelve minorities, um, which was thirty-two percent, and then fifteen women-owned, so it was forty-one percent. Um, so again, we've, we've met our threshold there too.
Was this ad again? Or the, I'm sorry.
He wants the demographics. That's why he's in the middle of looking up.
Okay, so the demographic, the, the actual demographic data I sent to you on Friday, which was the big spreadsheet that I can pull up after the presentation and show you where that is. I certainly can walk through that with you. This is just a, an aggregate of that. Um, then we have the, um, again, this is the, the mapping that's showing you by census tract. Um, and for, you know, where location of, of restaurants are in the City of Erie, you can see how they, um, it's actually interesting because when I first looked at it, you know, track four, um, it encompasses that sort of fourth and state sector. So that's why I think that got such a large, uh, or darker color. But it's just an interesting way of, of loo- of analyzing the data and, and we should be concerned because then we can, we know which ones were in the QCT and which ones were not.
When the ones who got the five thousand, do they have to give you any further, like, hey, here's some pictures of how we used it, here's this? Do they have to do any of that or no?
At this point, we haven't required that. However, um, that's one of the things I wanna work on in the next year is, is reaching back out and seeing if they completed their project. And, um, it's, however, it was not, it was not a, in their agreement. Um, it would be really nice to know if this was beneficial to them and if they, if they spent their money the way they should have spent their money. Yes.
And many of these restaurants, I, I would hesitate, I'd say all of them lost more than five thousand dollars during the pandemic. So I, I don't see the need
to really.
To really go back and see what they did with it because they may have just paid off their credit card.
Right.
Yeah, with it. I think a project, but probably not one that you wanna do, would be to go back and see because there were forty-two restaurants that got the federal rev- restaurant revenue relief money. And of course, the Bourbon Barrel is the big, you know, their five hundred thousand that they got and then they claimed la- uh, like a year ago August, they were still gonna open and they never.
And then they claimed like a year ago August, they were still going to open, and they never did. That doesn't involve us. But an ambitious person who likes to do spreadsheets could go through the, do a search of all the restaurants in Erie County, but then you'd have to limit it to the city ones to see which ones got the federal money and ours. And I don't know that there was that much, I don't even know if there was any overlap, maybe a couple.
Investigative journalism.
Yeah, maybe somebody, when that person isn't watching Allentown City Council meeting, she could go home and anyhow. But the information is available in a database on the federal funding, so.
Right, I think, but to Lisa's point, I mean, this was, this was one of the hardest-hit industries.
Yeah.
And what we've heard from just conversations is that, you know, it paid for a credit card. It paid payroll for that week, for one week, you know, wasn't, even though it was helpful, I mean, that we know that there was a great need to support these, these. But I have already discussed going and, you know, just, just touching base, adding it to the spreadsheet, you know, maybe making a site visit. I think it, I think it is, it is our, it is our duty to do it.
Did Julio, the Manicore guy, did he apply for any money?
I don't, I don't recall him on the list. Yeah.
Even though that spreadsheet is big and it looks bulky, you can go, you can do a really quick scroll down one of the rows or columns to see who got it. I mean, and that's what I just did. And I'm like, okay, most of these places are open as far as I know. There might be one or two that are no longer open. But it was easy to do because it wasn't way over there. You didn't have to keep scrolling over. It's boom, there, so you can.
Yeah, they're all listed under, under the grants. Yeah, I'll walk through it with you if you need.
But even, Jackie, maybe even like just a, that worksheet would be helpful just to print out sometime, not tonight.
Or I can even pull it up just to show you the categories on it. We're almost done here.
I'm pretty sure we'd need some ledger paper to do that.
Yeah, yeah, it would not, it would not.
Do the, you know, the print thing that you can do where you can narrow it.
All right, so, so those were the flagship restaurant. Now I want to, I want to share with you some of the, some of the good things that are happening with the Community Development Initiative. So Christian Ministry, which received sixty thousand two hundred and six dollars in ARP funds under the Community Development Initiative grant, they renovated ninety thousand square feet and their project is complete. We've closed them out. The Christian Ministries was founded by Bishop Frankie Quinn, very nice man. Their new home at nine thirty Liberty Street in Erie was previously the Temple Ancha Hesid, which was purchased in the fall of 2020. The goal of obtaining the three hundred and thirty-three square foot building is to provide ample space for a number of programs that will help build equity and equality within the minority community. They've developed this program called the Achievers Entrepreneurial Hub, A E H. And it's in collaboration with Paramount Pursuits. It's designed to offer shared collaboration working space, as well as member office space to budding entrepreneurs on the first and second levels of the building while providing technology and business development support, marketing, technology, strategic planning. It's really a one-stop shop. And what they needed was they needed, they needed spaces to house their program. They needed to renovate these spaces. So if you take a look at the images that I have up on the board, and I happen to know this building. They purchased, on the left, they purchased all of those desks and made it a classroom. They purchased more furnishings. They put in flooring, which Andy Zimmerman said was a really great job that the contractor did. It really changed the whole look and feel of that very old building. They painted, they put in, I can't remember the name of those heaters that are on the wall. Those, they're, they're, you can have a certain number of them. I'm not sure what the name is. I forgot what the name is, but they're, they're, they're the wave of the future. A lot of European countries, I mean, that's what's used to heat. Instead of replacing your whole system, you use it for one particular room. And then they have all these different.
They call them heat pumps or split minis?
Splits, that's it, yes. And then they have a series of different meeting and gathering spaces for when people are coming to network and that kind of thing. So this six hundred and twenty-six thousand, or six thousand, sixty thousand two hundred and six dollars was for capital improvements and supplies for the program.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I saw that when it came across. I thought that it was for the programming itself, not for the capital when I read it. I just, so.
Well, they, they, no, no, it was, it was, it was intended for capital improvement projects. So from the beginning, from what, and I think they, they requested more than that amount, but we gave them, we gave them this amount. And then they, they actually received CDBG funding for their gap, for their gap financing.
Okay. So it was just something that, so when it came across our dashboard, it was, I couldn't tell it was a capital project. It appeared to be the.
The programmatic.
The programmatic that, that you were referring to.
And we only have seven capital improvement projects. Of the twenty-three Community Development Initiatives, seven of them are capital improvements.
And I believe the resolution that came across, the way it was written, all twenty-three of them were on one page. We didn't distinguish between capital or programmatic.
Which would have been helpful.
Something for the future.
Yeah.
Be more detailed.
And this is just another picture I wanted to share with you, showing, showing their improvements, the technology, the server. This, this, this one, the middle picture is like a, like a cafe almost for people to sit, network. And then the last picture is again, another room for, for their programming. So that takes us to another, another Community Development Initiative grant. And this is Dafmark Dance Theater. They received fifty-seven thousand one hundred dollars in ARP funds. And so far, they've expended fifteen thousand five hundred and four. This is for programmatic expenses. And I asked Jennifer Dennehy to send me a quick video so that you would not have to listen to me talk anymore. So I'm going to play this. It's not too long. And I, oh, Frank, you're going to have to help. Can you rewind it to Frank for me?
Hello, I'm Jennifer Dennehy, Community Outreach Program Director at Dafmark Dance Theater. For over twenty years, Dafmark Dance Theater has been developing and delivering community outreach programs. The first of which was with Erie Homes for Children and Adults, developing the Partners in Dance Program, which teaches dance to individuals with intellectual and physical disabilities for over twenty years. Throughout the years, there have been many other community partners. The newest addition to Dafmark's community outreach programs is the Dafmark Creative Art and Library Center, which is located at the John E. Haran Garden Apartments and is about to complete its second year. This program provides free, year-round, after-school and summer arts education across mediums, including painting, clay, music, theater, dance, stop-motion animation, and much more, serving over a hundred and fifty youth annually who live in public housing and employing over twenty community-based teaching artists. The ARP funds provided to Dafmark have enabled us to hire an additional part-time staff who works directly with the youth each day, enabling us to serve more youth with a two-staff approach. It has also provided funds to help support the program director's salary, who was volunteering in that role for the first year and a half of the program. Dafmark has been able to leverage the support from various grants, including the ARP grant, for this program to increase the amount of financial support that the Housing Authority provides annually, beginning in 2023. Additionally, the Dafmark Creative Art and Library Center has leveraged its success and support into being awarded over a half a million dollar grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education to become a 21st century community learning center. This is a five-year grant that will enable us to hire an education specialist to assist with students' academic needs, to continue to support a program director's salary, and to hire a third-party evaluator to track the outcome of the program over five years. We appreciate the support the city has provided through this ARP grant to Dafmark Dance Theater. The ARP grant has been instrumental in putting our community outreach program at the Dafmark Creative Art and Library Center on a financial track to create a long-term, sustainable program.
And the reason I, I picked this one, or that I'm sharing this one is, here is a great example of ARP money that was, that an organization was able to leverage more money because they received ARP funds. And the way that, and I'm probably going to butcher this a little, but the way that Jennifer has explained it to me is that once they got the ARP grant, once they established, or, or sort of showed sustainability, that they were able to, to receive additional funding. And, and they're now going to be funded for five years. I mean, that is a big accomplishment for this program. And so I really liked this, this particular, their, their story.
I apologize, I have to get to a segment.
Oh, okay, yes. Thank you, ma'am.
See you later, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Stop, Sharon. No.
Frank?
Right there. You got it, Lisa.
Never mind.
I'm not in the right spot?
Okay. You got to pick your.
Oh, now it's gone.
Do you need a back?
Yeah.
I'll get to the right slide. That's all right. You got it, right there, Family Matters, thank you. So this next one, Family Matters, is also another programmatic use. And it's a, it's a tried and proven workforce development program that's, has been, was piloted and they're continuing. And it's partnered with the Martin Luther King Junior Center, and it currently working with Charter School of Excellence, Erie High School, and McDowell High School. This project specifically target, targets women and low-income minorities with a desire to reach the most affected population of the pandemic, moving them into recovery after the pandemic by providing transformative solutions for communities with a focus on skilled training, entrepreneurial education, and enhanced quality of life. It's really job training. It's mentoring, job training, and then it's utilizing the connections that Family Matters has with community, with, with businesses and organizations to place, to place the individuals that go through the program. And I just show you, they've used the ARP money only in two cohorts so far. They're, they have, or the one cohort, they had a hundred percent participation and a hundred percent graduation. And then out of those, they have four participants who are working full-time. And three of them were at St. Vincent, and one was a cook. And I found, it was an interesting, because how they, how, how it was broken down was either Family Matters directly assisted in helping them get a job with the connections they have, or they prepared them for an interview. The participant got their own job, but they prepared them for the interview. They helped them, walked them through the process. So it's, it's a very handheld process. And then they have their, their second cohort with ARP spending. They have twelve participants, and their graduation is this Friday. So we'll know more numbers after that.
And I think we all got invited to that.
Yes.
That's the thing that Kevin sent to us, Mel?
Just, just to revisit the Community Development Initiatives, the Christian Ministries. Renee sent an email around with that resolution. She sent a memo with the resolution attached to it that had a little blurb for every single one of the recipients. And there was a blurb for Christian Ministries.
A description.
Yeah, describing what the project was for.
And I remember.
But there was, like I said, there were so many on that page that it might be easy to forget that.
And we, in, when we send out the agreement, again, we're sending the application as an attachment. So we can certainly show, you know, that they, they did intend to use it as capital improvement. Lastly, I, I share this one because it's one of the largest grants we gave at two hundred and fifty thousand that we awarded. And it is one of the, not that it's the most interesting, but it's one of the most unique, I guess, grants. And you may be familiar with it, but it's Bodie Garden Initiative. It's a three-component nonprofit that's been built and developed over approximately two years. The components are mental health, R and D, education, and Feed Erie. Bodie was awarded two hundred and fifty thousand for an aeroponic grow system within the newly-built EMTA expansion. This will not only help with the food desert issues surrounding our community, it will also utilize this facility for mental health and educational purposes. You may be asking, what is an aeroponic garden? I have some examples. So I don't know too much about it, but I know that our funding enabled them to purchase all of the equipment that they needed for this aeroponic grow system, as well as the indoor lighting, walking cooler nutrients, and then a few small additional costs that they actually did a budget modification for to cover some additional construction costs for their own space. And so this, they, and in this picture, you'll see, I just talked to Michael Shannon. All of the equipment is in a warehouse right now. It's sitting there until EMTA is finished with their space. Once it's installed and finished, we will then complete a site visit, take all of our documentation, do a grant closeout, and they'll receive the additional ten percent retainage, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. So this is just one of those examples that I wanted to show you that they're near completion and an interesting project. He promised that we'll have strawberries, local strawberries, in the, in the winter time here in Erie. Just to conclude, I want to, I want to invite you all to the next ARP meeting and hope that you can be there because at that meeting, you get to learn a lot more about different projects that are going on. We tend to have, you know, maybe a spokesperson from, or, or the department head from our internal departments speak. We give a progress report, we answer any questions, and we discuss with the different committees, you know, what's working, what's not. And we open it up for questions. So the next one is January thirteenth at eleven AM, and it's always Zoom for, for now. And then lastly, this is the ARP website. And Liz asked a question about the dashboard. That is going to be up here in the next year because we, we need to, you know, show the progress that we've made. So the intent is to take the information in this massive spreadsheet and use it in such a way that it would serve as a dashboard for the ARP website and be a live, a live document that is continuously changing as things progress, so.
I'd just like to add this, all of the applications. All of the applications are online, and this is your vehicle for applying online.
Yes.
I don't think we mentioned that anytime during the presentation, but did we?
We did. In the in the slide that showed the process, that was the online application. They have to submit. We did not do a paper application. We only did it through the ARP website. Right. Lisa's right.
You did a great job. I even understood.
And I believe that this morning on the mayoral briefing, that the planning director said, we have, is it three RFPs to revamp the city's website? I believe that that was what I heard. So we know that that's a need, not directly about ARP, but everything should hopefully be easier, more user-friendly, more efficient.
Yes, yes. Any other questions, comments?
Heck, we'll be done. I'll tell you that.
Actually, I do have some questions.
While you're looking that up, I just I had let me look at Lisa. I had blocked off one more study session on Thursday. Mel can't be there. Is everybody good for that for this Thursday at 5:30? I also put together, and I'll email this to everybody, but I'll have printouts for you also. I came up with, I think it was like 10 different ways we can begin to address that what has been raised as a concern here, the looming, you know, the structural deficit that we have, looking at that in terms of, and I sent that to you, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah. I might have to do a little bit more refining, but I'll make sure council has it by tomorrow, that a way that we could tackle this from the get-go in, what year are we going into? 2023 in January. I tried to listen to all the ideas you mentioned. One of the things that's stuck out for me was when Michael was talking specifically about the, what do you call it, the clean-out, that where stuff is left on the curb and we and, you know, public works ends up picking up that stuff, you know, could we charge for that? And I also wanted to let you know that today on the mayoral briefing, David Forrest said that he is moving ahead with talks with, actually, in conjunction with Mill Creek, about establishing a housing court, which was a priority in Erie Refocus that I remember he used to ask like every couple of months, when's that housing court going to come? When's that Blake Court going to come? So that's moving forward, and I think that there will be ways to address that specific question that you asked about the messes that people leave that we end up becoming responsible for. So I'll send everybody the things that I came up with tomorrow morning, probably. And did you come up with your question, Michael, as I was talking?
First one is, so we're only hiring now 17 police officers, and there were rumors that the rest of the money was going to be recirculated into ARP.
We've only hired 17, but they didn't say that we're not hiring the one that they that refused that didn't take the job. So they still have the number 18 in this year's budget.
Okay, so the question was that there's not an adjustment in its would seem that the other, the rest of the money is going toward, not toward kids programming, but towards police, things to buy for the police in fire. Is that is that correct? That the money that was going toward salaries is now going to be rooted toward lack of better work toys?
No, I think that's been decided. No, and I I know that Renee had talked to me. I mean, I'm the one that mentioned it because Renee said they've been working on that youth investment fund. So that would come from the money that has been freed up by not hiring by hiring fewer police officers. But I don't think that Lisa or Jackie can answer that. I think that.
And there was a million taken from economic development on that as well. So there was a $2 million. There's like almost a $2 million new bucket that they haven't really discussed.
So I so anyway, so.
Now, I would I would, it is a possibility. We are very low on capital money, and we do need to buy five police cars every year, pretty much, to keep our fleet up to date. So there is the possibility that we would want to spend some of that on keeping our fleet up to date, new cars.
And if you're speaking to Mr. Keys, if you're speaking to the spreadsheet that shows the budget that was approved by council, then no, that hasn't changed yet. And the reason is, I wouldn't change my spreadsheet until council approves or there's a transfer approved. And that's how the spreadsheet functions, and and it's done intentionally because I don't want to change things until decisions are made. So that's why you're looking at that number, and it's not adjusted yet. You're correct, though.
And also, the original allocation for the 21 officers included outfitting them, body armor, body cams, three cars, and the upfitting cost for the cars and some other related costs. That was all in that initial figure.
So let me get back, but I believe 14.4 was just for salaries, right?
No.
Plus, plus necessary.
The equipment and necessary.
But that's not accurate because there was an ask for $600,000 for the cars and other things, and actually, $1.1 million actually in additional money that went toward that.
If you go to the spreadsheet, and I'm going to show it to you here so that you can find it, and hopefully I can, I don't know how I can get to it. You'll see on this spreadsheet, there's a police tab, and I don't know how to move this.
Here's the little arrow.
That's it's it's okay.
You can see the expenses made by police, all expenses to date. It's broken out on the spreadsheet for that purpose.
Right, I saw they've only spent like 300.
Three, 300,000.
$100,000. But I'm saying, so some of it's not, so some of it's not, so some of it doesn't pertain directly to ARP. It pertained to, well, yeah, the last $500,000 of ARP money was going into the capital, the capital fund that was going to fund those things.
We've got 2. I can't remember, 2.6 million-dollar capital budget in '23, and not not very much of that is police. I mean, we've got a lot of other capital needs, so that 500,000 is not just for police.
So that's, okay. And then there was another 600 in capital. So that's 1.1.
Right. Both of those added together isn't enough to cover the entire capital ask for next year.
Yeah, but I, yeah, that's, we can kick that one down the road. The other one was that the redevelopment authority, where'd it go? Well, you could bring it up up there. So so I was looking at, you know, their 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 projects, and it said that they had completed two projects, but their expenditures were $4 million. And the the projects were supposed to be limited by $25,000 or something like that. And so I, there's a big disparity between what was.
You want me to bring it up on the spreadsheet?
Yeah, if you can.
Okay, yes, I can.
My phone just closed. Let me open it back up and find it again. Housing, here we go.
No, I know where it is. I have to stop, Sharon.
There seems to be a definite flavor for people wanting cuts. And I think with the experience that we have on council, you got to understand, I'm for a $2 million cut because that's the $2 million deficit is what we start with after we take, what, how many, three and a half million out of the monopoly money?
How are you going to do that, Ed? How are you going?
I am not going to do that. That's what the hell I'm trying to tell you. If I were the mayor and my council said, get its close expenditure and revenues together, I would rather have the opportunity to make those cuts.
How are you going to, you have 2 million, you mean, you want the mayor to make $2 million in cuts by next week for 2023? Is that, I'm just asking, is that what you're asking?
Did you hear what they're talking about? Somebody's talking about cutting three people in planning. Other people are talking about cutting police. Everybody's.
Who's talking about cutting people in planning? We have somebody in the planning, are we telling Jackie that she's going to be cut?
Oh, no.
Yeah, she's done.
Really?
We're talking about the three little hires and Davids thing.
In where?
The data analysts and that.
Oh, my God, Ed. This is going to move us forward finally.
So.
Can I can I answer your initial question?
Yes.
Okay, the the money that went to, we're talking about RACE here, the money that went to RACE, and this is in the contract that we signed with them, is all of the administrative money that was in their budget, and one-third of the programmatic money per year for the next, for '21, '22, I mean, for '22, '23, and '24. So they'll get one-third of the programmatic for each of those three years.
And actually, I, because I had a feeling we were going to go have be asked this question, I I pulled the actual language from their agreement that says that. And it it's in the RACE agreement. It says it's the request for payment. Subrecipient will receive dispersment of city of Erie ARP funds once yearly or as agreed upon by the parties. The first dispersment will include a third of subrecipient's programmatic expenditures and the entire admin budget. Once the agreement is executed, the first dispersment will be made. So they did not receive.
So you weren't here when the contract was signed, correct?
I I wrote the contract.
You wrote the contract.
Yeah.
That's a pretty bad contract. And so, so first of all, you talk about accountability. So even if they did the wrong thing, they still got 2.2 million already transferred to them. Okay, no receipt, hold on for you, no receipts, no accountability, and that's not even including the $6 million that was washed through that that we have no ability to, okay, so they didn't do, that they didn't execute. I won't say they did something wrong, that they didn't execute. So now we've given them, they've hopped out of ARP parameters. So with the with the time with the timelines and with the, I guess you could say, the the federal use of funds matrix. And so, so I just think that.
I have a question for you. You interrupt a lot, I got to interrupt. You asked for the contact information for the auditor. Have you contacted the auditor with these allegations?
So.
These are pretty serious what you're alleging here.
So first of all.
Did you contact the auditor after you requested the contact information from Renee?
First of all.
You got the information. Did you contact the auditor?
Let me answer. So I believe in decency and order. So I wanted to see, have the presentation, you know what I mean, and look at the presentation, have the data before I talk to anyone else. So the question is, no, I have not contacted the auditor.
You had a couple, at least two weeks.
In advance of.
Do you mind if I, do you mind if I just respond for a second?
Yes.
And 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 I hope you contact the the auditor. And I actually spoke with him, and I made him aware that you would be, you know, asking some questions, and I think it would be helpful if you spoke to him. That way, you can understand how they're monitoring us. And so when when we talk, remember, this is a subrecipient. This is different than the beneficiaries. They, we provided them, when they got their agreement, a template for financial reporting, a very detailed, I received the last reporting, we received at least five different Excel files, all on administrative, all on their administrative costs. And they're, it's going primarily their salaries because they wanted to increase their capacity. That's why they requested the admin upfront.
This is completely off the boards.
So I.
Do you happen to know if they hired any minorities, people of color? Because last time I looked back there.
I wouldn't because it's not part of our, it's, I wouldn't because it's not, it's not part of our grant monitoring.
Can I, can I ask you, did you say that they've gone off of the federal requirements?
What I'm saying is, once the $6 million went through the general fund, and we granted it to them, it's correct, it's no longer bound by the ARP parameters.
Okay, we're conflating two things. We're talking about two different issues here.
Well, I was, I was adding, I was adding that.
Okay.
So it's, but the other program, this money within the different programs, I saw that they've only completed two. And I was just like, wow, there's $4 million, you know, and and I see $50,000 worth expenditures. And, you know, and we're fighting, you know, you know, the Booker T over, well, I'll just use that as an example, or make sure you use this money back, give us the receipts, da-da-da-da-da. And then we say, $8 million, eh, to these, another organization, let us, let us know, you know, when you get it figured out. And that's what the way it sounds like in layman's terms to me, you know, I don't say I'm a financial expert, I'm not or anything, but that's what it sounds like on on the surface to me, you know. But, you know, it's my hope that they they execute their programs. But because we granted it to them, we lost our ability to take it back.
There's actually a clawback provision in the contract. If they don't do the required.
In the contract, but you changed the contract once the money was granted. Am I correct? Once the money was granted, after it went through revenue replacement and the city gave them the money, not the ARP?
We created a similar contract with the same clauses in it, so.
Yeah, and benchmarks.
Right. If they're not making progress and they're not spending the money in the manner that we intended them to.
Okay.
It will be put back, and we've got dates in there, and we will be monitoring it. So we wanted to, we wanted to fulfill the spirit of the program, but we wanted to be able to do loans, so we created the contract to make sure all this happened.
So they're more than a year out from 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 their agreement or from their award. And so, well, if you can share that, share that, if you have updates, could you share them with us when you get a chance?
And they are in that spreadsheet. I just met with them. I just spent two day, two days actually meeting with, if you look in that spreadsheet, you'll see that they have 638, to be exact, on their healthy homes waitlist. So they, and as well as.
They have two projects completed.
Four, they have four now.
Four projects completed.
Yes.
And so were they still bound by the $25,000 in those, or are those much larger projects than were estimated?
I can't speak to that. I'd rather have Aaron speak to that. I know that they have, in the original agreement, they have benchmarks of, I think it was 180 homes for specific projects, 80 homes for one. I mean, we are, as far as my, as far as our, as far as.
Four is a concern.
I think you should probably.
What you're talking about, you know, it's spending 17 million.
I think we, like Jackie said, would rather Aaron speak to that.
To progress, but I mean.
You don't have to speak. You can just send us, send us the updates, send us the information, we can look at it.
And I know that, because I just met with. And I know that, because I just met with them last week in anticipation of, you know, this, this, um, this meeting, you'll see on their, like their Greenway project, they, they just, um, they just entered into a contract. Like each one of them has a progress report in this spreadsheet. And if you, I want to just quickly show you this. If you, how did you get that black thing down?
Oh, sorry.
Very, very bottom left corner. There's like an arrow.
Right, right click on that little-
Keep going.
Here?
All the way, yeah, right click.
Oh, right click.
Yeah.
How do I get this?
Pick one of those.
Oh, I see. I want to scroll right.
Give it to me.
Okay. I want to scroll right on the spreadsheet, not pick a different sheet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, I think I'll just use my arrow. How's that? Oh, no. Okay. Let me just show you, Mr. Keys, where this is, okay? So that you can see and we'll be, let's see, so you see where it says?
I'm going to get closer to the screen so I can-
Up at the top.
So, so, so-
Up at the top, it says the total housing, okay? And you'll see the different, they have all the different programs that they, the loans are not included in this, but the programs for under ARP are all here. And then if you scroll over, you'll see the adopted budgets. You'll see the cumulative expenditures.
Correct.
And then you'll see the balance remaining. Okay, so they only got a third of their programmatic costs and they got all of their admin and that's reflected there. In this internal reporting, you will see that I have updates from their programs here. And I will change these accordingly. So you have to go into it and click into this cell and it's like probably four or five sentences. So every month I hope to provide you with that so you will be able to see how many homes they've completed and we're, and we're going to be looking at that too. I mean, as long as they keep producing, that's what we want to see.
Know how many people they've hired?
I do not. I do, I, I don't know specifically. I know that their, there are, their administrative fees that they've presented in their financials are primarily for their salaries, for salary costs. But I don't know anything about their hiring. I should because it's in their, I, I don't recall, but they provide a progress report to us and I think it was four pages and I can't recall what it was, but you-
If you can send it out to us, that'd be great.
I just want to say that the email with the information about the auditor went out on November 23rd. If any other council members would like to contact the auditor, I'm sure Renee would be happy to provide that information to any other council members who want to make their own individual inquiries.
So, so there's, there's a whole bunch of moving pieces in, in ARP, obviously. And so, uh, one, so the auditors are consulting and he recommends things for you. And so, but what our auditor is not, he's not an elected official of this city.
And I thought, two, three weeks ago, you wanted to go to the auditor. Now you're saying-
I want, I want to talk about, what I'm saying, so there's a lot of moving pieces because of ARP money that aren't ordinarily involved in, in, in government, you know, and so, uh, it's just the fact. So we're, we're all going to work our way through it and we're going to, you know, make the best we can. But the things that I want to speak with them about, you know, are some things about final rules and things like that. And so, uh, that I want to put in the case.
He would be very helpful and, and kind of explaining in his own terms because they, he not only has been a consultant to us for ARP, but they're working with several other communities. And he's not necessarily recommending to us. He's giving us the final rule interpretations based upon their work, based upon what they have to follow when they do their single audit. So it's, 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 he has, he has guidelines too that he has to follow, yeah.
And if we're doing anything wrong here, it's going to come out in the single audit, which is performed by the auditor.
Right. So, yeah, so I, I, I completely understand that.
I, I have another question about, because some of his concern comes out of how the final rule affected revenue replacement and how we used it in this particular case. Is there other areas where we're looking at using revenue replacement to extend the, the resources of the ARP funding? Like, for example, as much as I've stood up against it, like the police stuff. We've, we've been told that we're going to have to find attrition so that these officer positions end by the time ARP is over. But if we use revenue replacement, maybe we don't have to have as much attrition, uh, you know, and we can stretch it further by not being as front, upfront with it. You know, I mean, like it seems like this is a resource we could use everywhere. Is this something we're looking at for other spots?
At the moment, we're not, but I, I understand if we left that money in the police bucket and we weren't, uh, spending it all by the end of, um, '26, we could take it as revenue replacement. But we would have to know we were going to do that. We would have to take the revenue replacement and keep that in our fund to pay for future salaries. So yes, things like that can be done. Have we talked about them? No.
I mean, when we're talking about $12 million being available for revenue replacement and the fact that, not the fact, I actually don't know. I would be ignorant to say the fact, but I, I don't think it's accounted for. Like, I mean, it would make, at this point, because we made the buckets before final rule came out, like it, it would seem like putting all of it, you know, like police in particular, just as an example, not because I've made it an axe to grind, um, like it would seem to make sense to put the next three years of salaries through revenue placement this year and then just treat it like a normal part of the budget for the next three years and maybe be able to stretch it four years. Is, is that something, I mean, given the way the final rule came out, is that something that's being discussed at least? Other than me right now trying to find angles?
Not at the moment. Um, we would have to decide which, I'm going to just use the word buckets because I can't think of a better way to describe it. And we've got pictures of buckets. So, um, we would have to decide which buckets we were going to use because we've got a lot more ARP money out there than just 12, the 12 million that we're hoping that we get to take as revenue replacement. But all of that money is allocated, so we would have to decide where we were going to take that allocation from and move it into, do a direct, uh, council transfer into the revenue replacement and then we could replace revenue.
And I think I did ask Jackie a question about whether other federal funding out there might be able to be used for some of those stormwater projects in particular that would free up some ARP funding then. But I don't know that, that we know that yet.
Well, I did-
Department of Public Works said, well-
Well, can we let Jackie answer that?
Well, I talked, I asked that question at the last session.
I know. And that's why I was asking our, oh, my God.
Actually, Jackie asked that question of AJ today and she has an answer.
Yeah, I, I made, I wanted to make sure I gave you the right information and he briefly, um, said to your second point. Currently, Public Works is compiling information for PA's small water sewer grant and a larger CFA H2O grant. The funding source for these grants is the Commonwealth's portion of ARP, American Rescue Plan funding. We are unsure if there are any other programs as of now, but will continue to monitor and work with Abby Skinner. Public Works plans to utilize all allocated ARP funding for stormwater projects on infrastructure as there are millions of dollars worth of essential projects still needing completed.
Sort of like that was like a drop in the bucket of what we need to get done, correct?
And we, I wanted to also add that we're going to have to be monitoring this very closely during the 2024 year. Because if, um, if it looks like we're not, we've allocated funds to a beneficiary or recipient that is not going to spend it, we have to reallocate that by the end of '24 because, um, that, those funds have to be committed by December 31st, '24 and spent by December 31st, '26. So if, I imagine that some of these buckets are going to be allocated somewhere else because they're not on track to spend them.
Do we have to be proactive about that?
Yes.
So in 2023, dumping buckets through revenue replacement of stuff that we're keeping in-house so that we have the room to do that in '24?
Yeah, June, June 23. We, we have it, we are going to assess, I know in the agreement for redevelopment authority, we're assessing them June 20, 24?
June, uh-
2023 or 2024. We'll do a full assessment so we can, you know, see where they're at, see, you know, but yes, we'll, we'll be doing that. I think it's June.
We have an assessment scheduled for, I think, January of 2024. And they have to prove to us that they're going to be able to spend it by June of '24 or we're, we need it back, we need to, uh, take it back and allocate it to somebody else.
Because it's really supposed to be under contract or obligated by December 31st, 2024, so we have to-
As a process, do you just report all of this at the end or are you reporting this year to year? Like, do we have to do the revenue replacement every year or can we at 2024 be like, oh, yeah, we use that revenue replacement back in '21 and, and make the numbers work?
I'm using it year by year. That's why we're, we were short 600,000 and, uh, 675,000 last year. So I didn't, um, didn't replace it. We took it out of the general fund balance and we have to put it back.
I guess I'll gavel us out.
Do you have any other questions about the spreadsheet? I, you, if you want to come-
Also saw that the tree cutting and curb grants-
Were put into Public Works.
From, uh, from the parks to Public Works.
Right, right. We, right, that was, that was, that approval went through council. And we placed that, that money in Public Works because they're going to be doing it. So-
Absolutely, okay.
But I can walk you through the spreadsheet if you want to come to my office sometime and we can look at things. And in the notes, I, I wanted to show you that. In the notes, you'll see, like, for instance, that question you just asked me about the transfer, the date would be there, um, where we transferred it from, what the project's for. It's all in that spreadsheet. So when you go across, you'll see it.
I'm aware of it. I keep up with things, but it's just, uh, I, so, I think I was unaware that it was moving, that obviously Public Works does those contracts, but it was in, you know what I mean? So, but, 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 yeah, so, so that, that's, that's fine. So it's just that it was in, so, so, yeah.
And, and again, that came out of the $5 million bucket for parks and public spaces. And in the spreadsheet, I'm sorry to keep referencing it, but you'll, you'll understand the story of why we transferred that money and what the purpose was for. And, and it's still being used the same way. It was just, it came out of that, of that bucket.
This, this is really just about how Jackie summarized in her report, reporting to you. And we didn't change any account numbers.
No, no, we didn't change anything. It's just that we, we, the way, the, who's administer, administering the grant, it's easier to track that way, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.